All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the October 20th, 2025 Anacortes City Council Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franci, I could take the role, please.
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Could you please join me in the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick note for those of you who have attended tonight. The speakers in the back of City Hall are inoperative tonight, so if you can't hear, you might need to move up. So, the council is going to meet in executive session to discuss potential litigation as allowed by RCW 4230-110. The council will be in executive session until 6:15 PM. So, we're going to move into executive session. Thank you. No action was taken in the executive session.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I'd like to motion that we move the Item 7D under Other Business, which is the remainder discussion of our City Council procedures, to a future meeting.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Mr. Young to move Resolution 3188 Council Procedures to a future meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move we amend the agenda to add a new Item 3B, a motion to authorize litigation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. McDougall, and I think that's all we need to amend the agenda, so Item 3B.
So, here we are. I move we authorize the city attorney or her designated representative to bring legal action, any legal action which she deems appropriate in the name of the City of Anacortes and named employees against David Douglas Spidel and any other appropriate or necessary parties, including seeking an anti-harassment order and any other relief she deems necessary.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Fantini. Any additional discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, thank you for that, and we will move on to Item 4, which is announcements and committee reports. Got a couple of announcements, I'll try to go through these quickly. Haunted Forest is this Saturday, the 25th, 6 PM. Recommended for older adults and children. There are a couple of tickets left, usually that sells out. Just a reminder about how important smoke detectors are. On Saturday, October 18th, fire department units from Anacortes were dispatched to a fire on Sixth Street. Units from Mount Vernon and Burlington District 2, 11 and 13 also responded, but thankfully due to alert occupants and working smoke detectors, all occupants were able to safely evacuate the building, and there were no injuries to civilians or firefighters. So, again, check your smoke detectors regularly, close your bedroom doors before you go to sleep at night. I'd like to thank everybody that was involved, a few of us here in last Thursday's ribbon-cutting at the Samish Indian Nation Early Learning Center on 16th Street. New facility will have five classrooms serving infants and toddlers with a capacity for approximately four to children, a team of 17 staff members. Skagit County is hosting a public hearing on a proposed 2026 Weymouth Ferry schedule, or ferry schedule, and that's the 21st tomorrow at 1 PM, Commissioner's Hearing Room. Information may be found on the Ferry's website or Skagit County website. Another announcement, Skagit County proposed tax for public safety programs and services. This is a .1% public safety sales tax proposal. That hearing is on October 28th at 3:30 in the Commissioner's Hearing Room. And then, finally, and Mr. Fantini may have more to add, but for the AWC elected officials essential, please mark your calendar for December 6th. That's mainly for council and for new and returning elected appointed officials for this event, so let me know if you're interested in that for council. All right, council committees. Economic Development Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
The Economic Development Committee met on October 14th. It was Mr. McDougall, Ms. Hubick, myself, and also Mr. Coleman and Stephanie was there, and we also had a guest that was there. And what we talked about was, one, you know, the budget in the sense of having access to dollars and a future plan about how we want to follow up on the study that came out and the results of that. And so, we also had a lengthy discussion about pass-through traffic, like we were discussing that it's, we have about 2 million people that go from here, go through Anacortes, going down to the ferry terminal, but there are also other cities like Port Angeles, Edmonds, and we were talking about how do they capture their tourist folks and the dollars? And, you know, so those were some of the deeper discussions that we went into. Also, Gig Harbor charges a 50% tourism fee in addition. So, we're looking at how do we enhance our city, looking at the constraints that we have just simply because of budgets. How do we help downtown beautification move forward with their agenda and those people that are not immediately in downtown? So, it was a vigorous discussion, and we thought it was very informative, and as we move forward, we will look to see how those dollars can best be used to enhance the very thing that we want, jobs, housing, childcare. All of those things are critical things that we want to look at, and how do we narrow down the scope of what we're really looking to figure out how we move forward from here? So, you know, in a nutshell, the thing is, given the economic place that we're all in, the city is in, and everyone else around the country, we're having to make some changes, and we need to do some reality checks about what we can and what we can't. And so, the goal is to focus on those things that we think would be of maximum benefit to us as the citizens of Anacortes. So, thank you. Anything you want to add, Ms. Hubick or Mr. McDougall? Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Economic Development Committee? Okay, Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Public Works Committee met right before this meeting, Ms. Moulton, Mr. Young, and myself. We heard two presentations, one from Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. There is some concern that in this congressional session, there may be authorization for either heavier single trailer trucks, or longer doubles, or the potential for even three trailer trucks to be authorized, end up on the interstate but also local streets. This was reviewed in 2016. USDOT study recommended no changes to the rules, but it comes up every once in a while. And there are obviously various negatives associated with bigger trucks and also heavier trucks, mostly that force equals mass times acceleration, it's harder to stop a heavier truck. And so, they, this organization, the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks, which has constituent organizations, including the National Association of Counties, National League of Cities, and American Public Works Association, all are concerned about this, and they are going to be providing us a draft letter that we can consider sending to our congressional representatives about this issue. So, we'll see that in the future. We also chatted with business owners on both sides of 12th Street at the intersection of O Avenue, who will lose street parking as a result of the 12th and Commercial intersection improvements. WashDOT requires multimodal transportation facilities to be provided when you do an upgrade like this, and so we are adding bike lanes driven by, that's driven by a state complete streets law. The result of the bike lane addition without expanding the pavement width is that there's not room for the parking strip that there was previously. And so, our concern now is those businesses had a couple of parking spaces along there that they will not have access to after the intersection is completed, and that is a significant constraint for them. So, what we tried to hear from them was all of the issues that that has created. We don't have any solutions. We expect we'll chat with Public Works about some brainstorming, but we are pretty significantly constrained by the WashDOT ownership of 12th Oaks. So, we need to think generally in terms of something we can do other than on 12th Street, but we will be chatting with Public Works at a future meeting about that to see if there's anything that we can do to help out those businesses.
Any questions for Public Works Committee?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I just wanted to mention that they are losing 13 parking places total. Thanks.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
I was just made aware of this this evening, so I guess my question is, when we were reviewing that intersection, I don't, I don't feel like I was aware that it was going to impact Oaks Avenue east of that 12th Street intersection. So, we knew it was going, oh, sorry. We knew it was 12th and Commercial, along Commercial. I guess I did not realize that it was going to extend beyond just the 12th Street beyond those, the safety curb cuts, right, for the crosswalk? So, the impacted businesses actually extend quite a distance closer to O Avenue. Were we aware of that when we approved that intersection? I was just kind of curious if you have any insight, or if we can have more clarity on that in the future.
I was, I will say that I was not aware of that, that I don't recall that being part of any discussions at the council level or at the committee level. This was a surprise to me.
Okay, any other questions for Public Works Committee? Any other announcements or committee reports may have missed? Okay, we will move on to Item 5, which is public comment. Any member of the public wish to address council, anything not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none and no one online, we'll move on to our consent agenda, Items 6A through C.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Young to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. On to Item 7, 7A, Community Action of Skagit County is a presentation, and it was, Mr. Coleman, you're not, I can go ahead and introduce Ms. Finney if that's all right, and whenever you're ready, Ms. Finney.
Now, it's on.
Now, it's on. And again, please state your name and where you're from.
My name is Sandy Finney, I'm the Chief Strategy Officer at Community Action of Skagit County. I'm here with my colleague Bill Henkel, who's our Executive Director. I am an Anacortes resident of 16 years. Mayor Miller, council members, thank you for having us here. We want to thank the city for its past support of the Anacortes Resource Center and Community Action of Skagit County. I want to acknowledge-
Ms. Moulton.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Finney, I know we're having audio issues, so if you could take extra care to be like right on the microphone, that would be super helpful.
Thank you.
How's that?
Yep.
Good, thank you. I'll do my best to do that and scroll and look at my notes. I can do it, yeah, thanks. I want to also acknowledge Anthony Young and Carolyn Moulton's past board service on Community Action, thank you for that. And Mayor Miller, I want to thank you very much for supporting the Anacortes Resource Center and this partnership, and I hope as you're heading into retirement that you can count this as one of the many accomplishments, so thank you for that. Just a reminder that our vision is a community in which everyone works together to end poverty in Skagit County, and that our mission is to stabilize lives, equip people to meet their goals, and build a stronger, more equitable Skagit County. And it's very important for us to work collaboratively with local, state, and federal government to do this, as well as with coalition partners, both here in Anacortes and across the county. As you may know, about every three years, we conduct a community needs assessment where we gather input from staff and board members and community members, clients, partners, and so on. And these are some of the top needs, of course, that we saw in our needs assessment that we conducted last year. None of this should come as any surprise to you, I imagine. We also want to acknowledge the really good work of the partners at the Anacortes Senior Activities Center for their recent needs assessment, too. It really, what they mentioned in their needs assessment really mirrors what we're seeing across the county among growing needs for seniors, which of course include housing and food and transportation. And of course, there's growing insecurity in the senior services system. As many of you know, the county recently gave notice that they will no longer provide senior nutrition and Meals on Wheels services, and Community Action has been encouraged to evaluate if and how we can pull partnerships together to fill that gap. So, just to let you know that we are working on that, we're looking forward to having conversations about how we can fill that gap. You also know that some people come to Community Action in a crisis, and others come to us when they just need a little bit of help to avoid a crisis. So, a big part of what we do is prevention. It is keeping people out of homelessness. It is helping them make ends meet, keep food on the table, keep the lights on, and so on. And so, our resource centers are really important vehicles to make sure that this happens. Sometimes it's a matter of making sure they're getting just basic resource navigation, helping them, helping direct them to places where they can get help paying the bills, getting a better job, saving for a rainy day, and so on. And we also have care specialists who work with families and individuals to set goals and work on a longer-term plan, as they don't just stabilize, but as they're thinking about how they can set themselves up to thrive.
... tourism fee in addition. So you, we're looking at how do we enhance our city, looking at the constraints that we have just simply because of budgets. Um, how do we help downtown beautification move forward with their agenda? And those people that are not immediately in downtown. So it, we, it was a vigorous discussion and we thought it was very informative. And as we move forward, we will look to see how those dollars can best be used to enhance the very thing that we want, jobs, housing, childcare. All of those things are critical things that we want to look at. And how do we narrow down the scope of what we're really looking to figure out, how we move forward from here. So, you know, in a, in a nutshell, the, the thing is, given the economic place that we're all in, the city is in, and everyone else around the country, we're having to make some changes and we need to do some reality checks about what we can and what we can't. And so the goal is to focus on those things that we think would be of maximum benefit to us as the citizens of Anacortes. So, thank you. Anything you want to add, Ms. Hubick or Mr. McDougall? Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Economic Development Committee? Okay, Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, Public Works Committee met right before this meeting, Ms. Moulton, Mr. Young, and myself. We heard two presentations, one from Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. There is some concern that, um, in this congressional session, there may be authorization for either heavier, single trailer trucks, or longer doubles, or the potential for even three trailer trucks, uh, to be authorized, end up on the interstate, but also local streets. Um, this was reviewed in 2016, US DOT study recommended no changes to the rules, but it comes up every once in a while. And, uh, there are obviously various negatives associated with bigger trucks and also heavier trucks, mostly that force equals mass times acceleration. It's harder to stop a heavier truck. Uh, and so they, this organization, the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks, which has constituent organizations, including the National Association of Counties, National League of Cities, and American Public Works Association, um, all, uh, are concerned about this. And they are going to be providing us a draft letter that we can consider sending to our congressional representatives about this issue. So we'll see that in the future. Uh, we also chatted with business owners on both sides of 12th Street at the intersection of O Avenue, uh, who will lose street parking as a result of the 12th and Commercial intersection improvements. Uh, WashDOT requires multimodal, uh, transportation facilities to be provided when you do an upgrade like this. And so we are adding bike lanes driven by, that's driven by a state complete streets law. The result of the bike lane addition, without expanding the pavement width, is that there's not, uh, room for the parking strip that there was previously. And so our concern now is those businesses had a couple of parking spaces along there that they will not have access to, uh, after the intersection is completed. And that is a significant constraint for them. So what we tried to hear from them was all of the issues that that has created. We don't have any solutions. Uh, we expect we'll chat with Public Works about some brainstorming, but we are pretty significantly constrained by the WashDOT, uh, ownership of, of 12th Oaks. So, uh, we need to think generally in terms of something we can do other than on 12th Street. But we will be chatting with Public Works at a future meeting about that to see if there's anything that we can do to help out those businesses.
Any questions for Public Works Committee?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I just wanted to mention that they are losing 13 parking places total. Thanks.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Uh, I, I was just made aware of this, um, this evening. So I guess my question is, when we were reviewing that intersection, I don't, I don't feel like I was aware that it was going to impact, uh, Oaks Avenue, um, east of that 12th Street intersection. So we knew it was gonna, oh, sorry. We knew it was 12th and Commercial, along Commercial. I guess I did not realize that it was going to extend beyond just the, um, the 12th Street beyond those, the safety curb cuts, right, for the crosswalk. So the impacted, um, businesses actually extend quite a distance closer to O Avenue. Um, were we aware of that when we approved that intersection? I was just kind of curious if you have any insight or if we can have more clarity on that in the future.
I was, I will say that I was not aware of that. That, that, I don't recall that being part of any discussions at the council level or at the committee level. This was a surprise to me.
Okay, any other questions for, uh, Public Works Committee? Any other announcements or committee reports may have missed? Okay, uh, we will move on to, uh, item five, which is public comment. Any member of the public wish to address council, anything not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none and no one online. We'll move on to our consent agenda, items six A through C.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Young to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to item seven, uh, seven A, Community Action of Skagit County. It's a presentation. And, uh, it was, Mr. Coleman, you're not, you're, I, I can go ahead and introduce Ms. Finney if, uh, that's all right. Uh, and whenever you're ready, Ms. Finney. And, uh...
Now it's on.
Now it's on. And again, please state your name and where you're from.
Uh, my name is Sandy Finney. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer at Community Action of Skagit County. I'm here with my colleague, Bill Henkel, who's our Executive Director. I am an Anacortes resident of 16 years. Um, Mayor Miller, Mayor Miller, council members, thank you for having us here. Um, we want to thank the city for its past support of the Anacortes Resource Center and Community Action of Skagit County. I want to acknowledge...
Ms. Moulton.
I'm so sorry, Ms. Finney. I know we're having audio issues, so if you could take extra care to be like right on the microphone, that would be super helpful.
Thank you.
How's that?
Yep.
Good, thank you.
I'll do my best to do that and scroll and look at my notes. I can do it. Yeah, thanks. Um, I want to also acknowledge, um, Anthony Young and Carolyn Moulton's past board service on Community Action. Thank you for that. And Mayor Miller, I want to, um, thank you very much for supporting the Anacortes Resource Center and this partnership. And I hope as you're heading into retirement, that you can count this as one of the many accomplishments. So, thank you for that. Um, just a reminder that our vision is a community in which everyone works together to end poverty in Skagit County, and that our mission is to stabilize lives, equip people to meet their goals, and build a stronger, more equitable Skagit County. And it's very important, um, for us to work collaboratively, collaboratively with local, state, and federal government to do this, as well as with coalition partners, both here in Anacortes and across the county. Um, as you may know, about every three years, we conduct a community needs assessment, where we, um, gather input from, um, staff and board members and community members, clients, partners, and so on. And these are some of the top needs, of course, that we saw in our needs assessment that we conducted last year. Um, none of this should come as any surprise to you, I imagine. Um, we also want to acknowledge the really good work of the partners at the Anacortes Senior Activities Center for their recent needs assessment, too. Um, it really, what they, uh, mentioned in their needs assessment really mirrors what we're seeing across the county, um, among growing needs for seniors, which of course include housing and food and transportation. Um, and of course, there's growing insecurity in the senior services system. As many of you know, the county recently gave notice that they will no longer provide senior nutrition and Meals on Wheels services. And Community Action has been encouraged to evaluate if and how we can pull partnerships together to fill that gap. So just to let you know that we are working on that, we're looking forward to having conversations about how we can fill that gap. You also know that some people come to Community Action, um, in a crisis, and others come to us when they just need a little bit of help, um, to avoid a crisis. So, a big part of what we do is prevention. It is keeping people out of homelessness. It is helping them make ends meet, keep food on the table, keep the lights on, and so on. And so our resource centers are really important, um, vehicles to make sure that this happens. Sometimes it's a matter of making sure they're getting just basic resource navigation, helping them, helping direct them to places where they can get help paying the bills, um, getting a better job, saving for a rainy day, and so on. And we also have care specialists who work with families and individuals to set goals and work on a longer-term plan as they don't just stabilize, but as they're thinking about how they can set themselves up to thrive. Here's a picture of our Anacortes Resource Center and a client who, um, actually, the baby is a client, as is the caregiver, um, and they were working with Rebecca with our WIC program to get services here, um, in Anacortes. But of course, we work, um, with people, um, that come to us, um, but we also go out to people to meet them where they're at. So that includes, um, families with children. It includes a lot of seniors, veterans, people without homes, and a lot of workers struggling to make ends meet. Um, a lot of times, people are working really hard, but something's changed in the household. They can't pay the bills due to maybe a death in the family, or divorce, or disability, um, or the number of wage earners in the household has changed. And this is where we can come in to help people do that resource navigation and fill the gaps. This is some information on how much, um, the impact of community action in general. Um, that number at the top, um, does look like a really large number. That does include the number of people we estimate that we have served with our Food Distribution Center. So that include, because our Food Distribution Center, um, puts about three and a half million pounds of food through its center every year, and we serve many, many, um, tens of thousands of families in the county with those services. But I want to jump down to our Anacortes numbers. Um, so lives changed. 2024 outcomes in Anacortes. We did serve 1,133 people, um, in Anacortes in, uh, the calendar year 2024. Approximately 243 of those avoided homelessness, another 468 accessed food and nutrition education, uh, 925 expanded their income via various benefits we were able to connect them with, and close to $50,000 in rent were paid to Anacortes landlords. Oops, excuse me. Um, and this is a particularly striking, um, slide that I wanted to share. Our numbers of people served in Anacortes has skyrocketed since we've, um, started up the Anacortes Resource Center. In 2023, as you remember, that's when we first started up, and we were having some challenges finding a location, and the Anacortes Family Center very graciously allowed us to be there while we got our feet on the ground. And we estimate it's probably a little bit more than 20, because we were still getting our data underneath us, but that was year one. In 2024, we served about 140 people directly in Anacortes Resource Center. And then this year, January through September, it's already been 270. I do want to explain the leap. Um, there's a couple of things that we can explain that. One is just being here, and finally, and getting the word out. Um, the second piece of that is actually when we realized that we couldn't just do it with one service screener and one WIC person, we really needed one more person in the office in order to be able to allow somebody to get out and make connections in the community. So when we installed a third person in the office to be able to do that, that's when our numbers began going up, because we had our resource coordinator out in the community making connections with the hospital, with schools, and with others. This year, in May, we hired a resource events coordinator who's been able to even, um, take that effort even further. And she's been at a lot of community events, including the back to, um, the Ready to Learn Fair, including the Senior Fair and other events as well. And that's made a big difference. The second thing I want to call out is the Energy and Utility Assistance. You can see that that jumped from 161 people in Anacortes served to 752 in 2024. That is not a mistake. That did happen. And we've seen those numbers jump all around the county, although I do have to say that it's most drastic in Anacortes. And I think it's partly because of our Anacortes Resource Center, and it's partly because there's just a significant, people are feeling the pressure on prices going up. And Energy and Utility Assistance is a service that helps keep people housed. It helps them move their money to mortgages and rents and food and things like that. So that's a vital service. Um, and one of the things that I'll talk about that will be happening is we're going to make sure, actually, starting right now, is one of our staff members here will be a full-time energy intake specialist in order to respond to that need. Uh, just for a little, some demographics, uh, 30%...
Ms. Martin.
Sorry. So, um, so the funding for that full-time, um, low-income housing, Energy Assistance Program, is that something that's paid for by the program itself?
That's paid for by our Energy and Utility Assistance Program. So partly by Puget Sound Energy, which has increased its funding to us, and partly by LIHEAP, which is the Low-Income Heating and Energy Assistance Program.
Great, thank you.
So who we served in Anacortes, about 30% age 60 and over, about 33% families with children, but do note that this doesn't include WIC numbers. Um, again, about 19% unhoused, um, about almost 22% homeowners. Um, and I think what's really important here is that 88% of the people we've served in Anacortes are less than 100% of the federal poverty line. That is about, um, $47,000 for a family of four, and $22,500 for a single individual. Um, looking forward, um, again, hot off the press, we do have an employment specialist in the Anacortes Resource Center weekly now, to be able to work with people on, um, finding supportive employment programs and things like that. We look forward to coordination and expansion of our senior services, and we're already having conversations related to that. Um, we've started conversations with the school district to make sure we can get the word out to struggling families, um, to make sure that they're connected with resources that can help. And as I mentioned, um, we have an energy, full-time energy intake specialist in the Anacortes Resource Center now. Um, last but not least, I just want to, again, thank you all for your support of the Anacortes Resource Center. We'd love continued financial support, um, moving into 2026. It's been very valuable. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
All right. Questions, council?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
One of the things that we've mentioned before, and I think it bears mentioning again, is the help that you've provided to our senior population, that that is a very complimentary service that you're providing. It's, it's major. Um, and I don't know if there are opportunities for your event specialists to, to work at the senior center, specifically to meet people there, if that's been talked about or is even being done. I, I wouldn't, I don't know. Um, and also, um, veterans, um, and then the whole Energy Assistance Program, that is major. That is really a way to keep people in their homes, because falling behind on utility bills can be devastating. And combined with the, the 30% discount of city utilities that people can qualify for, that's another big help that we're able to provide as a city. So I think that that has just been key, and that's exactly the kind of initiative, those are exactly the kind of programs that I think are extremely powerful right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And, um, we can have more conversations around whether our resource events coordinator can be out at the senior center more often. I know that our new, um, Senior Mobility Services Manager, um, who just started a couple months ago, has already started those conversations. And he's already reached out to the Senior Activity Center here, as well as other senior activity centers around the county, um, to be making connections and to talk about how we can support more, and to build up our transportation program, too.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Uh, no, thank you for the presentation. And, you know, I've always been a fan of Community Action. When I first moved here to Skagit County, Anacortes, uh, Community Action reached out. It was just the personalities of the, um, team that was there, you know, I, we didn't need the service, but what it was, was a warm welcome for me to Skagit. And it just boded so well for me, as I've been a fan and later served on the board. Um, one of the things about, you know, when we think about Anacortes, we think Anacortes, um, as being financially in, the, the people being financially in a great place. I mean, w- w- we do. But what we also miss is all of those people that are on the margins, that are here, in front of us, that we may be missing. And what I love about the work that Community Action is doing is engaging that. And those numbers are really showing truth to where we all are in the struggle, even more so now as, uh, the, um, economy constricts, less resources are being allocated, and then, um, you know, the, the importance of the money that you do have, that it's being placed and used ever more critically. So, you know, I, I really appreciate the work that you guys are doing. Uh, my house will continue to support Community Action in every way we can. Uh, I encourage everybody out in the listening audience to, uh, consider Community Action as, um, to help lift food insecurities, uh, just everything that we're all struggling with in this world right about now. Um, imagine those people who are less able as we are, and not, and ensuring as best as we can, they not get lost in the shuffle. And so I thank Community Action and the team of people who work so hard to try to make that possible. So, you know, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. If I can respond really quickly, um, one of the things I know sometimes we'd often, we talk about trying to end poverty in Skagit County, and we talk about the importance of, of, you know, looking at that and serving, and supporting people who are experiencing poverty. But what also is important is the, um, the number of people who are above the poverty line but can't make ends meet. And that's, you've probably heard of ALIS data, asset limited, income constrained, employed, people who are working and still can't pay for all of those important goods, childcare, transportation, and so on. And so we know how tight things are right now, and so we want to do the best we can to make sure people can navigate resources, um, and find out what they're eligible for to, to make ends meet. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you for the presentation, and I, and I appreciate all the work you are all doing. Um, I just was kind of curious about, there was, just, can you go over the, the, the employees that you have in the Anacortes office? Because I think it was, started out as two, and now you have a, if I heard it correctly, a resource coordinator, and kind of what that looks like, and kind of how many hours a week. And then, is there also an event coordinator? Is that a separate position, or is that the same person?
No, she's based in Mount Vernon.
Okay.
Yeah, so she goes out to wherever she's needed.
Okay, I was just kind of curious about, and then also the employment specialist. Can you kind of give us an insight to like what the daily goings-on of that, of the office looks like in Anacortes?
Sure, that's a great question, yeah. So one of the things we did is when we, um, started up the Anacortes Resource Center, is we wanted to model it, um, essentially after our East County Resource Center, which is bigger, but that was kind of the vision that we had, that we started with. But we didn't have the funding to fully set that up at the time. So we decided to say, okay, we'll have one WIC staff person who's here, and then one service screener, um, and what we, who was at the front desk answering questions and providing resources. We found that that wasn't quite sufficient, because the, um, the WIC staff person is in, is in meetings with WIC clients all the time and isn't available at all. So then you don't want somebody to leave the front desk to go out to do something and leave nobody at the front desk. So we had some challenges there. So what we did is we, um, we ended up having a service screener and then a resource coordinator. So the resource coord, the service screener was part-time at the front desk, able to answer phones and anybody coming in, and, uh, appointments. And the resource coordinator could do a lot more out in the community and make sure that, um, that information was out and a lot more marketing. Um, what's happening now is that service, but the service screener was still part-time and not always very busy. Um, so we had, we took a look at it, and we said, well, really, it's the energy assistance that's, that is where we need the, the time and the person. So that service screener, Lissa, if you've gone in and met her, she's now going to be a full-time energy intake specialist. And so she'll be focusing on that. And then, and then she and Diana will be splitting time sort of at the front desk as need be. So that's how it's going to work. Because it is a small office, and because we don't have the traffic that, say, Mount Vernon does, or that even Concrete does, we've had to kind of do a little, um, wraparound there. And then our employment specialist will come out once a week. And so this is similar to the way East County Resource Center works, where we have partners who come in, enter there once a week, or twice a month, or things like that. So at this point, we'll have an employment specialist coming out once a week. Um, I'd love to have one of our, um, uh, senior and disabled volunteer services staff come out once a week also. That's another option. They're based in Mount Vernon, but they could be here. So...
That's, I think that's really helpful, just to kind of get what that daily, daily experience is. And I appreciate the fact that you've tried to look at where we have, there's extra manpower and where those needs are, and to be able to kind of modify and, um, change, uh, to, to react to what we need in our community. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Um, I guess, looking forward, as you know, have you, when you mentioned the Meals on Wheels, how far have you gone along with that discussion? I think we're really concerned about it. I've heard from senior center board members that they're, like, that is essential for our community, and we've got to find a solution for that. We also have a budget shortfall, like everywhere else does. So have you, uh, it's probably more of a, maybe a committee-level discussion with our local service providers, but do you have any, any thoughts on that to expand?
I can just say, at this point, we've started to have conversations about what's the situation, you know, what's the shortfall? We've looked at the budget. We've talked with Commissioner Weason to understand more about, you know, the details. Our, um, our senior in Transportation Manager has gone and talked with Renee at the county to get more details, as well as with people at the different senior activity centers to understand what's, what's needed. We do know that we have experience with meal preparation and transportation, and, um, a lot of the work around it, but it's a really, really big program. And it's, um, I mean, what, $1.7 million, 300 volunteers. Um, we've got lots of experience with volunteer coordination, but that's a big jump. And when you're looking at a program that's losing money, the question is, all right, nonprofits might be a little more flexible, but still, how do we make it work? I think we can't do it without some creative partnership conversations. So...
Anything else?
Mayor Miller, can I ask?
Well, uh, and, anybody who hasn't spoken on the topic yet, uh, Ms. Hubick?
Thank you. Do y'all provide people connections to home energy audits?
I don't know, but I'll find out.
Yeah, that'd be lovely. I know that, well, in, in reading the comprehensive plan and going over all the things that we're talking about, um, and my past life and working with, you know, legislative offices, like, making sure that people's homes are properly insulated is one of the biggest cost-saving measures that we have. But it's also never cheap to get started. So, um, I know that there's a couple of places up in Watcom County that we're doing it, but they're not doing it for free anymore. And I was just wondering if that was any place that, like, y'all have ventured out into, or if you've connected anybody here in town with resources.
I could certainly ask. I do know that it's, um, the Skagit County Housing Authority that does weatherization work, and so they might be doing some of that work. And we always make referrals to all of our energy clients to make sure they know about the weatherization options. But in terms of home energy audits, that I, I don't know, but I can find out.
That'd be great to know. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else before I go back to Mr. Young? Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Now, my question was, um, just out of curiosity. I know our farmers, I used to serve on the farm board for quite a while, and, um, you know, we produce a lot of things here. And at some levels, there are sort of blemished items that may not instantly go to the markets. And I was just wondering, could you elaborate on a bit of the relationship between the local farmers and that excess or additional items? Is that something we're working on, making sure it's going to the pantry, or...
I can try to answer some of that. I may have to call on Bill to jump in if I need to. But, um, I know that, um, we, um, did actually have a, um, a federal grant that was focused on increasing our work to get local food, in particular, produce. Um, so we worked with a lot of, um, a lot of local farms to get specifically fresh produce into, um, the distribution cycle. Um, what's really unfortunate is that federal grant, which allowed us to be able to then work with those local farms. And I, um, that ended, unfortunately. Um, what I don't know is about our work with local farms, separate from the work that that local, that that grant allowed us to do.
No, you've answered my question. You know, one of the reasons I brought it up and wanted to bring it up was because I also, when serving on that board, brought it up to them.
Okay.
Okay? And I think that, you know, even where we are now, with just production, uh, it, it just, to me, would seem a great symbiotic relationship. Not only would it benefit the farmers and people becoming ever more understanding of the reason we support the farmers, the reason they're produced here in our area, the reason we have to protect farmlands, which is their mantra and their message. But also, at the same time, you know, part of that role is for, if possible, for farmers to also help those in need, if they can, within reason. And, um, so that was really kind of a two-handed question I was bringing forward. But I do think it's a huge opportunity, and I think that, I'm hoping, that the farmers would also, um, see where there's additional pieces that may not be marketable directly, that they could also, um, help that hand reach out to the very people we're talking about. Thank you.
Exactly. And I do know that we have had some farms donate some of their own volition. We also, Morgan Curry is new to our board as of a few months ago, actually, no, last month, in fact. And so I think her participation on the board will be helpful in, um, helping us develop that relationship with farmers as well.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Great work. I'm very supportive, as, as you know. Uh, we're entering the bottom of the fifth.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'll, I'll wrap it up by saying, when the city entered this partnership, I know it was real, it's a great presentation, because we're hearing the feedback that I know council was very much interested in having that physical presence and staffing that physical presence. And I appreciate the fact that you're working that and you're seeing the numbers. So, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Mr. Fantini.
I'm so sorry. Um, I just, I had one quick question and just one compliment first. I know when you came before and gave us, uh, presentation, either last year or the year before, I was like, ugh, 20 users. I hope, I hope we can, I hope we can grow here. And I just, it's, I think it's very impressive that 270 year-to-date users suggest... And I just, it's, I think it's very impressive that 270 year-to-date users suggest that we're successfully establishing yourself as Skagit's friendly door-to-door resource navigation, so that's great. My other, my question, though, was, you mentioned about income expansion, that 925 people experienced expanded income. Can you tell me what that kind of means?
Yeah, where that basically is like, any sort of benefits that might help, like, extend the income. So not like increased income, like a, like a higher-paying job, but rather like benefits that allowed them to stretch their income further. So that might be SNAP benefits, or WIC benefits, or, I'm trying to think, TANAF, or things like that, that are going to allow their income to go further.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the work you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thanks again. Appreciate you coming. All right, we'll move on to item 7B. This is opioid settlements fund to support Anacortes youths. And Mr. Lunsford and team.
Mayor Miller, council members, how's my audio presence?
Good.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so my team is assembled, that's great. We're going to start off with the presentation to you about the opioid settlement funds. We know there's a holistic approach the city's doing. You've heard from other presenters that have talked about the things that can be done with that funding. We want to focus tonight on what can be done for youths, and prevention of drug addiction, opioid use for youths in our community. So, and that just, just to give you more information as a council, ask us questions so that you can have the most information that you need to make the decision that you feel is right for the community. Okay? So, the three of us up here, Anacortes Library, Anacortes Museum, Parks and Recreation Department, three of your city departments, we work with a lot of the community, but we focus on youths in much of what we do. And in the One Washington memorandum, that focuses on what can be done with opioid settlement funds, you'll see in item G. I pulled up number six and number eight, showing how you can engage with nonprofits, faith-based community groups to support prevention, and school-based or youth-focused programs, which would be us, on strategies that have demonstrated effectiveness preventing drug use, misuse, and seem likely to be effective in preventing uptake and use of opioids. Our view of that is that we provide youths with opportunities to work in a positive way in the community, to be engaged with mentors, and be active in the community in ways that help them see ways to be successful, productive, and engaged citizens in the future, and have fun while doing that. So our request to you for consideration, this is just discussion tonight, we're not asking for any action, to be clear, is 75,000 over five years, so essentially 15,000 a year for the three departments, spread evenly each year. And so what we would like to do is come up one at a time, and briefly kind of show you what the, talk about what the slides mean, and then at the end, I'll wrap it up, and you can ask any question that you like, or, you know, interject at any time. And we'll start alphabetically with the library.
All right. Members of council, Mayor, thanks for the opportunity to ask for some of the funds here. I have too many words on my slide, because my ask, the library's ask is really straightforward. We, we're asking for support for all the outreach and programming that we're doing, specifically during the summer, for summer reading. And specifically, what we're hoping for is to hire teen, much like the parks do for, like, seasonal help, to help with planning and executing the programs. We've never had the opportunity to have that kind of support. Anytime we can get out of the building and do programming at Washington Park or Storvik, we reach a whole, a different demographic that comes into library, obviously, so we're really hoping for that support. It would be sort of mentoring program for that teen, and that's the basic gist of it. Questions? Thanks.
Brett Lunsford, Anacortes Museum. We've had some successful engagement with high school students in media production in the past, and look forward to doing some more of that. And that's one of the types of areas that we would be working in. Also nonprofits like Anacortes Music Project, and just engage in ways like Mr. Lunsford said, of getting people in a positive direction, and having a sense of things to do with people, and engaging when possible with older people in the community, and establishing some sort of mentor, mentee, as a, as that kind of connection, and bridge into positive activities. That, that's about our view.
And in Parks and Recreation, again, we're just building on programs and things that we already have experience in, like Mr. Vogel and my brother said, things that we do and have done well. So we work with after-school arts programs, and we do that, unfortunately, the school has cut some of those programs, we know, over the pa... There I am. And so we try to offer more of those, partnering with Anacortes Arts Festival, with Ms. McAmoyl and I have spoken about this idea to bring after-school arts programs. We know that after-school is a problem time for getting youths engaged, and so if we have just simple drop-in open gyms, that's a way that we can get youths engaged, offering them traditional sport activities and non-traditional sports activities that maybe, that maybe basketball, things like that don't speak to them, but other things could. And so we've done those things, we'd like to expand that. And then, like Mr. Vogel said, we often employ youths to help us do that, so it gets them engaged, even if they're a non-sport or something, and it teaches them mentor skills, and has older adults like our staff helping them. And then, finally, life skills and mentorship, programs that we haven't seen before, that we would like to do, to talk to them about things like finance, and engage in different ways like that. So all of this is kind of try to help build successful youth, give them positive ideas, a lot of opportunities for engagement, and using some of these opioid funds to do that, to help them be successful community members. We would like to be accountable to you by coming to you regularly with updates through the reports that we write, project deliverables, giving you our numbers, so you can evaluate them, so that we can, you can know who we're hitting, what we're doing, and if that still speaks to the goals of the city as we're moving along. And this colorful slide is my end.
Mr. Walters.
You're asking for $75,000 total over five years?
That is correct.
So that's split evenly between the three departments, $25,000 divided by five, so only $5,000 a year per department.
Exactly.
Is that enough? Are you, are you really able to make a difference with $5,000 annually per department?
I think so. I think that, I mean, we all are very, we're used to running very frugally, and we would engage the community, there's nonprofits that could help us. We've done these programs before, I mean, it's a whole...
But like, for, for your department, the $5,000, how do you, how do you go from the zero to $5,000 and offer how much more supervised open gym with that much money?
So for us, our model that we've used, we've hired young adults to be the gym supervisor. We mentor them, or they've done this before for us, and they're there for a couple hours to allow youths to come in and just play in a supervised fashion, whether it be basketball that day, or badminton, or volleyball, or things like that, or just a drop-in. That's an easy, affordable way for us to do it. We have a gym downstairs, we have an interlocal with the school district, so there's ways for us to do that that already exist. Hiring that youth or young adult to do that is a simple and easy way for us to plug in that money and get a quick result. Hire, where you're hiring someone to come in and teach art, for example. We have good collaborative relationships with local artists in town. Many of them are very, you know, focused on building the community. Could we use more money? Yes, we could, but there are many other asks in the city, and let's, you know, let's get us going. If we're successful, give us more. But I think that this is a good start for us to do, and, and to gear it up and kick it up, if that helps with your answer.
That, that helps. I, I would be interested in some quantification of what each of you could do with the 5K.
I think we can, certainly, certainly.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm actually, the three, all three of you, I am most excited about the fact that, you know, when the county came here asking for money, one of my big questions was, what are we doing to address root causes? What are we doing to catch kids when they're younger, before they have the problems that they have? And this is the first presentation that I feel like really does meet that. You know, I appreciate the fact that we're hitting kids in all the areas, whether they're physi, you know, physical fitness-related, through non-sports activities, which I like that clarification, whether they're arts-related, or whether they're maybe a little quieter at, at the library. But I just, I very much appreciate the fact that we're coming towards the youth, because there's not a lot of programs that do that. I do also, though, agree with Mr. Walters, that is it enough? Because, I mean, if you feel like you could get it, get it done for this amount, great, but if you feel like you could use a little more, there are the opioid funds.
I think, I mean, thank you for that, Mr. Fantini. I think that we can get it started for this amount. I think that's part of the reporting project with, to you, is to talk about deliverables and what we've been successful. And, you know, I, I think that that's, I think that's a fair approach the first year, quite honestly. I'll let the others jump in if they have any other questions, but I think that's a fair and honest starting point, is the 5,000 each department at the beginning.
I also appreciate the fact that we're hitting kids, like, I, I noticed the, the collaboration with what I'm assuming is the Anacortes High School Broadcast Club. You mentioned AMP with like the songwriting, I just, I think it's great with all the community collaborations, so.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. Well, you know, I, I love this. I mean, it's really a wonderful thing, the goal of inspiring and motivating youths to not sort of end up in the place where it is. One of the things about the, the money itself, though, is the money itself is intending to, at least the way I understand it, is intending to begin to address some of those addiction issues. And so in these programs, even though it's preventative in a way, the question for me is how are we addressing the existing conditions right now of people who are addicted? And, you know, is it, is this part one cog of a bigger picture? And, you know, and it's kind of like a holistic approach, not only we have other things, we've got the, the, you know, the social workers that's there, we've got Dualec over there, we're working with that, and so another piece of that pie is this. And so would you elaborate a little bit on that? I've had some emails about, you know, using the funds specifically for addiction itself, and so I wanted you to be, have a chance to address that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Young. I think that the city as a whole does have that holistic approach, and does have, you know, contracts with the family center to help us intervene with social workers. We have, you know, the, and on the law prevention side, we have the Drug Dog. And so I think that if you put it all together, ours is more of a youth prevention program, and then the city's holistic approach would, to address these other things, using other partners we have in the community. So we're just one piece of it, we're not the whole, we're not the whole piece. That's why I think that we want to start out with the asks that we are presenting to you tonight. And as you hear from others in the council, if that doesn't meet your needs, we can come back and address what we're doing. But I think that we are just, one piece is part of the prevention, I think the city will address some other things that you are bringing up.
Thank you very much. I just, yeah, no, I, I think you really are, and thank you.
It's a great question, it's just something to consider. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath, and then Mr. McDougal.
Thank you for this presentation, and I, I, the fact that you guys, I, I feel like all three of your departments were really hard to do everything on a shoestring budget, so $5,000 doesn't seem like a lot compared to some of the other department asks, but I, I, like, I appreciate the fact that you're making that happen. I'm kind of curious, and you don't have to answer this right now, but if you, but if we do move forward, and you come back with more of a robust presentation, is, you know, how are we, how many folks, students, youth are going to actually be, expected to be involved with each of your programs for the departments? I think it's, and then my other question is, how, is there a way for, that you plan to try to connect with tho, those folks who actually, you know, need that additional service? The library kind of identifies it as reaching out to neighborhoods that otherwise may not be able to acc, geographically access the library easily, so going out to those locations. But I'm kind of curious, how do we make sure that these opioid funds are going to those in the most, those kids in the most need compared to all of our other awesome parks and rec that fill up really fast, and everyone loves to do? So I think that's something that I would like at least considered in our discussion. The other point that I make, because I know there's other folks who want to talk, is that, to me, this, this is a great example of why doing a work-study session would be great about the opioid funds, right? So that we can kind of get an understanding of all of the asks we've had, whether it's county, whether it's police, whether it's parks and rec, library and museum, so that we can have a discussion as a whole of, you know, we have a finite amount, where do we want to see that, the direction of those funds go, and how can we make sure that the community feels like we are being the best stewards of those funds? And I don't know if that would probably happen maybe early next year, but I think that that's, this is a great example of, it's almost like you're asking for so little, it's easy to almost ignore it, and I don't, I, I don't want it to get kind of put to the side, because you're not asking for all of it, right? You're not asking for $50,000 a year for five years, so it's, that's almost a more round number that seems, that sometimes gets more attention than, than a smaller amount that is, you guys are really making huge gains with. So, thank you for this, but those are my thoughts, as of now.
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. Thank you all for the presentation. I'm definitely like a supporter of this kind of move. And really, I guess, for, like, I agree with Ms. Cleveland McGrath, would love to have that larger discussion around the opioid funds. But also, when, when you guys come back, kind of with that next level of detail, would love to see sort of just like, that broken into a couple categories, like how much of this is like essentially, you know, wages, and how much of it is like programming and things like that? Just sort of that next level of detail, so thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you for that discussion, and we'll move on to item 7C, which is a contract modification, master service agreement, master services agreement, this is a discussion item with possible action, and Mr. Rayum has this one.
Good evening. Uh-oh. You gotta get really close tonight, don't you?
Yeah, apparently so.
Okay, here we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is a master services contract modification. The contract is with Anchor QEA, and the modification is $34,690. If you'll notice, there's a, we have some history with Anchor QEA in this master services contract, and that's because of the water treatment plant, so you have two cleanup sites in the city. Well, one's in Mount Vernon, but it's, it's ours, it's the water treatment plant, and the other one is the A Avenue landfill. Oh, I didn't put up my little slide, hold on.
The map.
So the, the $34,690 is to have Anchor QEA on behalf of the city work with the Department of Ecology to finalize the remedial investigation work plan and the quality assurance project plan for the A Avenue landfill. The city entered an agreed order with the state of Washington to investigate the A Avenue landfill, which was formerly a city of Anacortes-operated municipal landfill from 1940 to about 1970, 1940s to, to around 1970. In 2003, under Skagit County Public Health Direction, the site was capped, monitored, and issued a no further action by Washington State in 2006. In 2019, residents submitted a request to Ecology to further monitor the site, because a bicycle pump track was proposed on the site. Ecology withdrew its no further action, it's prior no further action finding, and placed the site back on the contaminated site list, which triggers MACA. MACA is the Malle Toxic Control Act of the state of Washington. So again, the additional fund is to get us through 2025, allowing Q, Anchor QEA to finalize the remedial investigation work plan and the quality assurance project plan, that's just code for designing a monitoring program for water and soil, and, and testing it, and how do you read the, the results? So, just a couple of quick slides. That's where the landfill's located, you can see in the upper left-hand side, it kind of zooms out, but then it zooms in on an aerial, that's the cap, is that, that brown spot. This is a really neat, so the state has a website for this, which I peeled most of this information off of, so if you're curious of what is happening there, they keep it up to date. You just type in A Avenue landfill, and the first thing that comes up. So if you'll look at this slide, they use this to kind of communicate with the public on the public input opportunities, or those little three dotted little call-outs. Keep in mind, back when you got your no further action, you were at the very right side of this thing, and you have been now, the city, not you, the city has been now, moved back to the initial investigation. So the, one of the things that we are concerned about is the cost of the investigation, so they've really expanded what they want us to test for, so that's why we need to work rather diligently with them, the clock is ticking. The clock is ticking. We have 60 days. We did get an extension to the end of the year, so that's past 60 days. But the, the state is, we're gonna be, we're really gonna monitor the site and know a lot of information about it by the end of this study. The study would likely take place in 2026, at the tune of $300-plus thousand is our estimate currently. And we're, it's not optional. We're in an agreed order with state Washington. So unless you want to see the state.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
And we've already authorized, under this contract, some $2 million worth of work, right? Was that all paid for out of solid waste?
That was all water treatment plant, pretty much.
Water treatment?
This is your second cleanup site. The water treatment plant was the first.
Oh, because it was the same, same contractor, same contract for?
That was the big dollar, that was the big dollar amount in the previous.
Yeah. We're just getting warmed up on this one.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
But to answer your question, this, this part of it is the solid waste fund, before it was all water, for the water treatment plant.
The Anchor QEA has done some A Avenue landfill work.
Yeah, yeah, we got to the remedial investigation.
But most of it was on the cleanup of the old water treatment plant.
Yep.
Other questions?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Hearing none. I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign a modification to contract 21024 LEG 001 with Anchor QEA in the amount of $34,690, increasing the total contract price to $2,325,623 even.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. McDougal to approve the contract modification as presented. Any additional discussion? Sir Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Heebick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to item 7E now, 2025-2045 Comprehensive Plan. Planning Commission recommendation, this is a discussion item only, and Mr. Coleman will be presenting. Mr. Coleman, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm John Coleman, Director of Planning, Community and Economic Development Department. And I'm here to talk to you something, about something that I hope you've been tracking over the past two-plus years, so this is, shouldn't be too much of a surprise. But yet, here I am, presenting some of the basic information yet again. The long and short of what happened is, the planning commission, after having public hearing, made a recommendation on the, to, made a recommendation that the city council approve the comprehensive plan with some minor modifications. And I'm gonna go over what the, what we've gone through so far. So the comp plan and the development regulations are both required to be updated. Of course, we know that's how we plan for our projected growth over the next 20 years. It's not growth targets, it's planning for what we're expecting to happen. And so if we don't plan, well, then we run into problems down the road when we're not prepared for when the people do show up. You've seen all this before. The Growth Management Act requires that we update it every 10 years. At that time, we look at our 20-year growth projection and make sure that we plan accordingly. For this process, we've gone through two phases. One was info and gathering, a lot of public outreach. That's when we did our climate teamwork, and we reviewed our, our goals and policies and had public hearings on the goals and policies, and had several planning commission meetings. And then phase two has been, we presented a complete draft of the comprehensive plan. We released that in July, July 16th for public review, and held a public, held the public comment period open to September. And then that's when the planning commission had their final public hearing on it. In the meantime, the draft regulation, draft development regulations were released on September 17th. The planning commission will be having a public hearing on that Wednesday night, October 22nd. And then those will be coming to the city council after we get those all tidied up into a package to bring to you. Ultimately, the county, the, the city council will be asked to adopt a comp plan and development We want to do those at the same time, maybe not the same night, but that would, that would be how I've done it in the past, is to present the, the ordinances, the development regulations to the same night, because they all work in tandem with the comprehensive plan. But there's other ways to do it, and we'll see how the schedule works out. This is the, the diagram of the timeline that we've been on, and we're right there towards the end. It's very exciting for the planning department. That's been a long two years. Just as a reminder, there's been a lot of communication tools. We have the website, www.planicortes.org. Of course, you all probably know that by heart by now. We had a subscription email list, well, we still do, with 176 subscribers, as at our last tally earlier this week. And we did a direct mailer, that you remember, back a couple of months, back in July. We sent that to over 12,000 people. And then, of course, we had social media and A-Town articles. This is a small list of the things that are available on planetortes.org. I only present this not because I'm gonna talk about any of them, but you can share this, see the sheer magnitude of information available. So that brings us to why we're bringing this document to you today. There's a lot to go over, and we're not expecting any deliberation or even any specific questions tonight. We wanted to get the planning commission's recommended draft out in the public for review, give the city council some time to review it, because it's 627 pages. That gives the community ample time. And then we'll be having, we'll, we'll come back and talk about this in, in a couple of weeks. And the schedule is still in flex. It depends a little bit on when this, the planning commission completes their work on the development regulations. We'd like to brag that we've had 30 planning commission meetings on this topic. Eight of those have been public hearings. City council's already touched this 10 times, including tonight. And that doesn't include the things like the open houses that we've had, climate team meetings that we've had, and other outreach and engagement. So where we're at today is, September 24th, the planning commission recommended approval of the draft with some modifications. And hopefully, when you've read the staff report, it made it fairly clear about what those minor modifications are. Nothing, nothing major, and some of those were driven by public comments that were received, and we're like, oh yeah, we should probably address that. And others were just the natural flow of things. Like, oh, that probably makes more sense to do it this way. So that is, of course, available in the council packet. Didn't want to get too much into what, what the changes are, but some of the major highlights are, well, we have a new climate element, so that's a big one. That we didn't have anything, we didn't have one before, and now we do. So that's, that's probably something that people might queue in on and say, okay, this is different than the last one. We made several housing element updates, largely around housing supply and variety, such as revised policies that promote a variety of housing options that meet different needs of residents, especially in high opportunity areas, new policies to permit allowed residential uses by right, and new policy around regulation of short-term rentals. If, if you weren't following along, that's just straight out of your, your packet material. So we also made neighborhood form, some updated goals and policies to promote organic change of neighborhoods over time and to avoid extreme changes in short-time period. And then some special needs changes. So updating policy to comply with state laws around emergency and supportive housing. So those are the policy changes. There's been a lot of public comment and probably, you know, discussion in the community about middle housing, and so, you know, making slight increases in how many units are allowed in areas, or changing lot sizes that would allow for more infill. Those are, those policies might be represented in here, but those actual changes are gonna be in the development regulations. So those are not in this, this portion. Just want to get that out, on the record, so people understand the difference there. Of course, we have a completely rewritten transportation element. I think it's very well done. And so a lot of technical updates, just, you know, like facts and figures in there. So that's probably of note to people. And then we have had a couple of future land use map amendments. The future land use map is basically the zoning map, you know, there's a slight, slight difference, one's in the comp plan, one is an adopted zoning map. But the zoning map reflects the future land use map. And I'm gonna, I am gonna go over those changes, just because they're fairly simple, if I just explain it. When you look at a map, it might take you a little while to figure it out, if I can just take a couple of moments to explain. It'll be, I think that'll be really helpful for everybody. And then, of course, the county has already added several city-owned parcels to the urban growth area. And those are city-owned parcels, most of which are in the ACFL, and the, and one other is the city-owned shop, well, kind of operations area. So this map here shows throughout the city our zoning, and shows, very small, of course, the, where the zoning changes are. The, I'll interchangeably say zoning and, and future land use map, I apologize. So here are the eight changes represented in a, in a chart form. I'll go through them individually real quick here. So number one is a, a small zoning change of, part of a parcel from, from Aeronautical to LM, that the, which is a light manufacturing. Just its location made sense for it to be similar to the property it's adjacent to. There's a road that separates it from the rest of the Aeronautical zone. This was a request from the port, planning commission recommended approval. We also received a request to change zoning of the senior center and the Fetalgo Pool area and a couple adjacent properties to be changed from RMD, which is residential medium density, to public. And these are owned, these are owned by public entities, except for the two parcels that are private, but that property owner is committed to giving them to the, donating those to the district. So they will like, they will be publicly owned in the not-too-distant future. And this was, the planning commission recommended approval of this request. We had a request for a change of this pie-shaped property that is associated with a residential property next door, to be changed from industrial to residential medium density, owned by the property owner next door. So planning commission recommended approval of that. Moving on to number four, there is a portion of land that is currently light manufacturing, and the port owns this, and is requested to be changed to manufacture and shipping to match the, their adjacent-owned property to the east, and they use both parcels for the same use. So they wanted to have them both be the same, and planning commission recommended approval of that change request. This one gets a little bit more tricky. On, on slide five here, you can see this dotted area around here, that, those are all port-owned properties. You can see that some are currently, there's, some are currently zoned commercial, including this end up here and this parcel here, and others down here in the blue are zoned marine mixed use. The port requested to change the commercial up here to commer, and here, to commercial marine to match its properties to the north. The board also requested to change these parcels, which are zoned marine mixed use, to commercial marine also. The planning commission studied this and recommended what you see on the left side. So changing these parcels north of Seafarers Way and east of Q Avenue as commercial marine as requested, and not, not make any other changes. The, the planning commission found that these, the property down here, which houses the Marine Technical College, should remain as marine mixed use, like the rest of the Seafarers area to its east. And the planning commission found that this property is on the other side, the west side of Q Ave, and it is, they found that it's consistent with the rest of the zoning on that side of the street, so they recommended to keep that as commercial marine, as, as just commercial, I apologize. So really, the, the changes affects these one, two, three, four, five parcels north of Seafarers Way. And so hopefully, that explains the pathway from where it started and where, where the planning commission ended up.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
On that last, yeah, thank you. That makes sense to me on first impression. P32956 next to McDonald's there, that's a former cleanup site, is, was that considered by the planning commission in their formation of this recommendation? And have we gotten any further feedback from the port on this iteration of the proposal?
I'm not really prepared to talk about the specifics of anything today. I wanted to kind of avoid going down that discussion path today, if you don't mind.
I, I would just then, I would just ask that we solicit feedback from the port on the revised proposal for when we get to that.
We, we have information from them, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Moving on, the other future land use map change is to add all of these parcels to the urban growth area. You signed off on that request back in 2024, and presented that to the Skagit County Planning Department, and went through their planning commission and the county commissioners, and these are, they approved all of them coming into the urban growth area, and we are zoning them the same as the ACFL adjacent, which is public. And then the last two, we have, our museum has been zoned Old Town for ever, for, for a long time. However, this has been a public museum for over 100 years, a public-owned entity for over 100 years, so we felt it appropriate for it to be zoned public. And so the planning commission requ, made that recommendation as well. And then the final one is the Olson Building was suggested to be changed from manufacturing and shipping, and included as central business district, because it kind of feels like the rest of the central business district. And that is, the, the planning commission did recommend changing that Olson Building property to CBD, Central Business District. So those are all the changes. Hopefully, having some maps and walking through that just kind of explains it. Well, if there's questions, love to talk about it at, when we have some deliberations on this. Or of course, you can contact me, and I can try to get you answers, or Libby, of course, who's graciously in the back, willing to help at any time. So the next steps is, so the city council is going to review this, and we'll bring it back for you to have discussion and make a, you know, choose to adopt, or make changes, or have public, have public, if you want to make changes, we'll have to have additional public comments. We do know that we have to have a, a tree canopy. We do know that we have to have a, a tree canopy assessment map included in the parks element, and unfortunately, we, that wasn't as part of this. There's been some shifting things, not a good guidance from, from Commerce, Department of Commerce on that, and then just, you know, there's a lot going on. So, we need to bring that back. So we'll prob, we'll probably have a public hearing on that portion of it, to make sure we can get that map into the, the parks element as required by the GMA. But otherwise, we're not recommending any other changes to, you know, to the, the comp plan itself. And then, the planning commission, as I said, they're having a hearing on Wednesday about the development regulations. After they make their recommendation, we'll bring that to the city council, and then the city council will have their opportunity to review that. And as I mentioned earlier tonight, we can adopt the comp plan and development regulations sometime in November or December, hopefully on the same night. If not, you know, so be it. Our goal was, and I think I mentioned this before, was to have this, give the council the opportunity to act before Thanksgiving, because after Thanksgiving, things get real tight in the calendar, and people shift their focus to, you know, Christmas and holidays and whatever. So it gets a little, little tougher to keep people's attention. So we were, wanted to give the council the opportunity to have this done before Thanksgiving holiday. And one final note, the critical areas regulations are due to be updated at the end of 2026. So, we're working on that now, and we're not gonna have that for you in 2025. And so we'll keep in touch with that as we get into it next year. Any high-level questions that aren't specific procedural questions I'd love to address, or?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I would just say, you know, we've been telegraphing this from the planning committee for a little while now that this was coming. And if you look through the document, the strike through and underline in the various elements is not so significant that it should be overwhelming. If you want to read the whole thing, it's quite a bit more, but you can focus on the strike through. The climate element doesn't have any strike through, because it's all new, transportation. But just the policies in the climate element are also not that long, you know? So I definitely encourage people to jump into it now. And as I am going through it, I am citing the policy number with my comments. I am not satisfied with not having any opportunity to amend this. I feel like there might be some things we may need to talk about and amend. We don't have to have a public hearing, we could have just a comment period and, and just ask for comments on the changes. But maybe each of those can be debated, it's just, it is, it is a big thing that we do only every eight or 10 years, so there, I think there will be some things that we'll want to talk more about. Congratulations on all of the work, and really a substantial amount of public input and public comment opportunities went into this document.
And we really wanted to get this in front of council, kind of as soon as possible, so we could have the, the time as we work through the budget as well, and weave this into a very busy schedule for council. So please enjoy your 600 pages of reading as soon as possible. Anybody else? Okay, with that, I will adjourn tonight's council meeting. Have a good day.